I call to order this August 7th meeting of the James City County Planning Commission. Mr. Holt, please call a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Dowdy, who represents the Stonehouse District, could not be with us this evening. Ms. Leverens?
Here.
Ms. Leverens is an at-large member. Mr. Polster?
Here.
Mr. Polster represents the Jamestown District. Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt represents the Roberts District. Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor is an at-large member. Mr. Croft?
Here.
Mr. Croft represents the Powhatan District and is this year's vice chair. Mr. Haldeman?
Here.
Mr. Haldeman represents the Berkeley District and is this year's chair. I'm Paul Holt, Director of Community Development and Planning for the county, and sitting to my left is Mr. Max Halevin. Mr. Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public comment period. This is an opportunity for people to speak to a subject not subject to a public hearing tonight. Do we have any speaker cards? I don't see any. Would anybody like to address the commission? Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period. Reports of the commission. Development Review Committee, Mr. Polster.
Design Review Committee met at 4:00 PM on 24 July 2019. Committee members present were Odessa Doughty, Jack Haldeman, Danny Schmidt, and Frank Polster. Staff members present were Tom Lineger, Jose Ribero, Amy Parker, and the applicants Jeremy Gorvitz from Tricor, Jason Grimes from AES, and Vernon Getty from Genny Harris, Franken, and Hickman. And they were there for case number C-190055, Monticello Avenue Shops. The case number on Monticello Avenue Shops was presented to the DRC as a conceptual plan for rezoning and development of three properties located at 4744 Old News Road, 3897 Ironbound, and 3905 Ironbound Road. The parcels were designated neighborhood commercial by the 2035 comprehensive plan. The applicant requested the item on the DRC calendar to discuss the project and seek input and questions from the DRC members. No action by the DRC was required. The parcels are concurrently zoned R8 with a proposal to rezone the parcels to B1 to accommodate a retail facility, a restaurant, a quick-service automobile commercial facility. The adjacent property at the east side of the property is currently zoned R8. If the B1 zoning request is granted, the proposed conceptual plan does not meet the minimum buffer requirements of the zoning ordinance. Staff was also concerned with other building setbacks and landscape buffers that the proposal did not meet. Staff and applicant agreed that waivers could be requested and the planning commission could recommend approval of those exceptions for those building setbacks and landscape buffer requirements. The one unresolved issue is whether the special use permit section of 2411 of the zoning ordinance could permit an exception to the buffer requirement of the B1 and eastern R8 parcel. The issue requires additional study and discussion between the staff and the applicant. Based on the discussions for the requested exceptions for buffers and building setbacks, the DRC consensus was supportive of recommending an exception to the B1 buffer, building setbacks, and landscape buffers requirements of section 2411 of the zoning ordinance. Other items of discussion were traffic impacts on Monticello, stormwater, and a V-dot proposal to close the existing right-in, right-out intersection located between the project area and the Monticello Marketplace shop. Both the applicant and the management of Monticello Market Shop were not supportive of the proposal. The meeting was adjourned until the regular scheduled DRC meeting on 21 August 219 at 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Policy Committee, Ms. Leverens.
We did not have a meeting this month.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Would anybody -- there are two items minutes to the June 5th and July 3rd, regular commission meetings. Would anybody like to pull away an item or make a motion to approve?
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Public hearings. The first public hearing tonight is SUP-19-00146096 Centerville Road Tourist Homes. Mr. Ribero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. Mr. Antoine Anderson Jr. has applied for a special use permit to allow for the operation of a short-term rental of a one-bedroom detached accessory apartment at 6096 Centerville Road. The property is located inside the primary service area, Zone A1, general agricultural, and is designated low-density residential on the 2035 comprehensive land use map. On January 8th, 2010, the Board of Supervisors approved an SUP request, SUP-18-0026, to allow the construction of the detached accessory apartment at the property. At the time, the applicant indicated that the purpose of the apartment would be to provide a place for his grandmother to reside close by. The applicant has since then indicated that their grandmother would be moving in a later time and that the applicant would like the flexibility to use the detached apartment as a tourist home until grandmother moves in. Both the detached accessory apartment and the main residential unit have been built on the property. As with other SUP -- as with other tourist homes, SUP applications, staff consider the home's location, parking provisions, and appearance to be favorable factors in the evaluation of this application. The existing driveway and attached garage will exceed the minimum parking requirement. Staff is recommending conditions which are intended to mitigate the impacts of the use and preserve the residential character of the home. Such conditions include restrictions on commercial signage and lighting, and any future expansions of the use would require an SUP amendment. Staff finds the proposal to be compatible with the 2035 comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, and surrounding development, and recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this application to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the conditions included as part of this application. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Anderson, the applicant, is also in attendance and ready to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Ms. Leverens?
Has the building been built?
Yes, ma'am.
And the garage is part of the building? It's not being used by the primary residents of the?
So, Beth, if we can look -- I have pictures of the?
I know it's an attached garage. The question is whether the garage will be available for the use of the transit?
Correct. So here is the picture of the detached accessory apartment. The entire structure is approximately 748 square feet, and half of that is the detached apartment, and the other half is the garage. Yes, ma'am.
And that garage is available to the transients for their use?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we typically entertain a specially permitted application for the construction for short-term rentals? Does that make sense?
Or five?
Meaning, the impetus for the original application was to be an accessory use. So do we -- so I guess my question is, do we consider the short-term rentals an accessory use? And would we typically foster an application through the process for just that?
So both are specially permitted uses, and timing notwithstanding, normally, if, again, I mean notwithstanding, they would be processed concurrently, but it would be the two separate SUPs.
Other questions?
Mr. Ribero, have we or have staff heard any concerns from neighbors?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any disclosures by the commissioners? That'll open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak to the commission on this subject? Other questions? Close the public hearing? Discussion or a motion?
I just want to comment that I drive by there at least twice a week, and it's been really interesting to watch that property and the development of it, and from the design when we approved it until it's now finished and open there. Really is a nice setting and property for the main house, as well as the attached piece on that, and I am supportive of this SUP.
I agree. It's a beautiful -- it was done very well, the house and the -- I can --
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve SUP-19-00146096 Centerville Road Tourist Home?
With conditions?
With conditions, yes, sir.
Mr. Holt, please call a roll.
Ms. Leverens?
Aye.
Mr. Polster?
Aye.
Mr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Croft?
Aye.
And Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. The second public hearing is tonight is SUP-19-00154440 Ironbound Road Tourist Home. Mr. Ribero, don't sit down.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Ms. Charlene Chamberlain has applied for a special use permit to allow for the short-term rental of an entire two-bedroom home located at 4440 Ironbound Road. The property is on R2, general residential, is designated low-density residential in the comprehensive plan, and it is located inside the primary service area. This SUP, if granted, would allow short-term rentals throughout the year. However, per the applicant, the property will primarily be offered for short-term rentals during the summer months, as the house is leased to William &amp; Mary students during the academic year. No changes to the footprint of the home are proposed. Staff, again, consider the home's location, parking provisions, and appearance to be favorable factors in the evaluation of this application. The property has an existing driveway and parking area sufficient to accommodate guests. Staff is recommending conditions which are intended to mitigate the impacts of the use and preserve the residential character of the home. Such conditions include, similarly, restrictions on commercial signage and lighting, and any future expansion of the use would require an SUP amendment. Staff finds the proposal to be compatible with the 2035 comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, and surrounding development, and recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this application to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the conditions included in tonight's packet. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. And the applicant, Ms. Chamberlain, is here also available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Ms. Leverens?
And any concerns from the neighbors?
Oh, ma'am.
Any disclosures? That'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to this matter?
We have --
Further queu -- oh, excuse me. Please, come.
Good evening. I wanted to thank all of you for considering this application, for the use of this property, and for taking your time to look and review all the factors involved. I've been very grateful for the help I've received in this. I live down in Norfolk, and we bought this house when my son was a freshman at William &amp; Mary. And we renovated it and raised the roof and installed two bedrooms. It is a two-bedroom, one-bathroom house. And we rented it out. My son lived there the four years he attended the university, and he graduated in 2015. He lived there year-round, but every summer, another William &amp; Mary student that was there to do research at the university would not have a place to stay. And they would ask him, "Can I stay at your house?" And he said, "Yes." And he rented the second bedroom to one of his friends. His senior year, he rented the second bedroom during the school year and had a housemate. The year was 2014, 2015. When he graduated, he had a housemate there with him, another William &amp; Mary student. And then he graduated, and that student said, "Can I come back next August and live here my senior year?" And I said, "Yes, but can you find another friend?" And he did. So we've been renting out to one or two William &amp; Mary students every academic year. We run our lease from the middle of August through the middle of May. We charge them for nine months, not 12. We don't do a year lease, because they're just students, you know? And that's what they're doing, and they go home during the summer. So in the spring of 2018, my two girls who were living there, one graduated, and the other was a rising senior, and she got a wonderful internship in New York City. So about a week into May, she said, "Hey, I'm off to New York City for the summer." And I said, "Oh, I now have an empty house for three months." So I tried Airbnb, not knowing that that was not something I was supposed to do, and I apologize. I wasn't ignorant. I just thought that the house was in James City County, which it is, not in Williamsburg, and I thought that it was exempt because it was in the county. So I apologize for that. So in the summer of 2018, last summer, we tried renting it out through Airbnb after no William &amp; Mary students came forward to rent it for the summer. And it worked out very well for us. We enjoyed it. We got wonderful, wonderful letters from families with three children that said they were looking for a place to come and stay in Williamsburg for a week and go to Jamestown and Yorktown and Busch Gardens. But they had trouble affording a hotel room with their three children. There were some hotel restrictions, I believe. So our house rents through Airbnb for $98 a night. We have a maximum of six people. It's usually two adults and three or four children, and that's how we want to use it during the summer. It's not set up to be a party house. It would not be appropriate to be anything like that. I understand from looking through this process, once I found out I needed to do this, I applied for the permit and paid the back taxes and everything. But I understand that this is like a permanent change for the property. So we have plans for the property. My fourth of four children is currently a rising high school junior, and he'd like to go to William &amp; Mary. He'd like to live in the house like his big brother did and be there for four years. So he will be looking at doing that, and we may well stop Airbnb, because he would live here year-round then for four years. And then after that, we might return to Airbnb. We really like renting to the college students. We feel like we're contributing to a needed area in our community by giving them an affordable rental. Our rental is cheaper than a dorm room, and they get the whole house. So it works out real well for them and us, and I think the tourist people as well. My husband and I are both William &amp; Mary graduates. We live in Norfolk, 45 minutes away, so we visit back and forth to tend to the property. We would be interested in retiring to this area and selling our property in Norfolk down the road. So right now, what I'm looking at for the future of this property is that we do intend to keep it, and we do intend to go back to using it primarily as college rental, and then maybe after that, again, maybe as Airbnb. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for me about it?
Could you state your full name and address for us, please?
Yes. My name is Charlene Chamberlain. My husband is John, and we live at 4915 Gosnold Avenue in Norfolk, Virginia. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or a motion?
You guys have heard this before, but I just want to thank both applicants that are here tonight. I know it's time-consuming to go through this process, but appreciate you, you know, playing the game by the rules, and I know the county appreciates you doing that as well. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve with conditions, SUP-1900154440 Ironbound Road Tourist Home. Mr. Holt, please call a roll.
Ms. Leverens?
Aye.
Mr. Polster?
Aye.
Mr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Croft?
Aye.
And Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
That's it for public hearings? Thank you, Mr. Ribero. Planning Commission considerations? I don't think we have any. Director's report? Mr. Holt?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Other than what's been included in your agenda packets, I didn't have anything new or additional, but if you have questions, I'd be happy to take them.
I missed your spreadsheet. Did it not get done, the one that's with all the activities?
Yeah.
I missed it then. I need to go back and take a look. I look forward to that, because it helps to tell me what's coming up in the coming months. Thank you.
Other questions? We'll move on to Planning Commission discussion. Board of Supervisors coverage, Ms. Leverens on the 13th. Thank you. Anything else?
I just have one that I'd like to offer up real quick. I spoke to Mr. Holt prior to the meeting, and I appreciate his wise counsel, because he didn't want Mr. Halevin to have to admonish me during the meeting, so I do appreciate that. But I am concerned about where we are with what we call the shared economy in these applications that are coming forward, because I think that we're making some long-term decisions that potentially impact the communities that these homes are in, and we don't know what the future holds in store. You know, you ask the question as whether or not the neighbors object. We get the answer that, no, they don't. But we've seen that in some applications, when these homes are inside communities, the neighbors are objecting. So some of the other applications we've seen, we've seen the neighbor, the adjacent neighborhoods, objecting. So I am concerned that we're making land use decisions that will have effects in perpetuity with an unknown future of a shared economy or the like. So I spent some time over the weekend reading through the comp plan, and I sort of feel that these short-term rentals are not consistent with the comp plan, at least in my opinion, because we talk in the comp plan about, you know, tourism, meaning hotels and restaurants are the third-leading employer in our region. You know, we talk about supporting tourism. We talk about creating jobs with benefits and those types of things. And I just kind of feel that the more we see these applications, the more we're chipping away at some of the items that our comp plan says we want to work toward. So, you know, I understand the agritourism and the ecotourism. I understand trying to find uses in rural lands, and one of the last applications made that argument that was out Forge Road. So, you know, I throw it out for thoughts or discussions, or, you know, we've had discussions at the policy committee a couple of years ago. You know, I think maybe it's time to revisit it, because we're starting to see more and more of these applications. You know, I certainly could more readily support these applications if, you know, I know the staff doesn't like sunset clauses, but, you know, if there was a limit on the duration of these things, so we could revisit them, because, again, we don't know what's going to be, what the economy's going to look like in 15 years or 20 years. We're making, we're making decisions that could materially impact, you know, neighborhoods forever. So that's my speech.
I like that. Go ahead, Rich.
To Mr. O'Connor's point about impacting the neighborhoods and the communities, one of the, the idea of a sunset clause is interesting to me on these sorts of special use permits, with the caveat that as long as, as an applicant for a special use permit, it isn't involving material expenditures on their part, whether it be to change the footprint of a facility. It doesn't, and doesn't have to be a tourist home or anything like that. I'm just looking at the concept of special use permits in general, and, you know, we've had the two items tonight. But, you know, to me, it seems like that might be a good use to look at a sunset clause. An SUP conveys with the property in perpetuity theoretically. So an owner can sell it to several other, you know, it can go through several sale iterations. The quality of the clientele could be significantly altered. There could be more of an impact on the neighbors five years down the road or three years down the road than there were at the time of the SUP application. And so I think Tim raises an interesting point, and I know we have, you know, brought, we've talked about sunset clauses in the past, and they've been largely, they've largely gone by the wayside. But I think, again, back to the earlier point, if there's no severe fiscal impact on an applicant, and that's a use that is changing for the property from a resident, say, in this case, to a tourist home, might be worth a further discussion to see about whether there are some SUPs where that could be appropriate.
I agree with everything that Rich said, and I'm glad that you didn't propose doing away with them altogether, because I'm afraid that would just make more of them go underground. So I, but I support looking into this. I was surprised and pleased to hear your suggestion, because I also think that bears more study as a possibility.
These are all good points. I do feel like that what we've done so far, at least the last couple of years, has been pretty consistent, like similar areas, similar stretches of road, not, you know, embedded in, you know, community. I remember when we first visited this, maybe four years ago, some of these neighborhoods, or the, you know, the HOA got involved, the whole room was filled, but these seem to be a little bit different scenarios, you know? Obviously, we could start to see some of the ones from those neighborhoods come back again that we saw early on. But, you know, I have three kids, so the woman who spoke tonight, like, we have that hotel problem all the time. They're very young. We try to get them all in the same room, but then they say, "Fire code, you have to have two rooms," and usually we're sneaky about it. But the point is, like, I understand, like, where she's coming from, and then we, you know, I've lived here, you know, pretty much 40 years, and how many hotels have I seen go by the wayside and just be wiped out, bulldozed? And people are, you know, I know when we travel, we do VRBO quite frequently, and it's happening, the shift's happening, so maybe it's also something to work, you know, to visit more intensively during the comp plan, but...
There's a portable aspect to this theme in a lot of newspapers, and they're part of our Housing Task Force, and both sides of it. On the one hand, a home, a home is portable, not because, on the other hand, rental of rooms where the house wellies were. On the other hand, rental of rooms where the house wellies... House somebody who... Have a newcomer... What's a... That's the same problem, but I think you all made good, unquestionably, comments.
I should add, too, that my statement about hotels vanishing, that was taking place long before the advent of this sharing economy with the vacation rentals. I mean, this was just an issue our community has had for a while. Fewer and fewer folks are visiting historic sites. It's a reality we face.
I think you also have to remember, though, that it's not the hotels, but it's the timeshares. I mean, we're almost the same size as Orlando when it comes to the numbers. And so, the economy has shifted from hotels to timeshares, and it's clearly shifting again from timeshares into this Airbnb area for it. So, I think if we're going to look at this thing, I'm not interested in choosing winners and losers in terms of hotels and timeshares, but I do take the point that he's making is that sunset clause allows you then to put a stop date on it so that you can, in fact, relook at the neighborhood or look at the considerations of growth that happen over time. But the timeshares and the hotels, there's not a thing we can do once that's done for it, so...
And one of the things that is in the comp plan talks about sports tourism and supporting that and advocating for that, and that's always a discussion when we talk about the War Hill Park and the like, you know? But to attract sports tourism, which is, you know, you have to have a critical mass of hotel rooms and those types of things to support the people to come here, to then go to the restaurants, you know? And I just find, again, it's not... it's not as if it's a critical mass at this point, but again, it's just chipping away at the edges, and, you know, if we're putting short-term rentals in competition with the hotels in the shoulder seasons, you know, then my question is, are we creating an opportunity for folks to have gainful employment? You know, we already know it's a struggle in the hospitality industry for people to stay fully employed year-round, and to take that opportunity away is concerning to me.
I'd like to point out that many of the timeshares, if not most, now are also acting as short-term rentals. So, they're in direct competition with the hotels as well.
Way bigger animal.
Anyway, I wasn't trying to open Pandora's box, but I think it would be a worthy discussion to ask the board of supervisors to give us direction or revisit it or talk about it as part of the comp plan update that we're about to undertake, and, you know, I just think it's... if we're putting these strategies and objectives in the comp plan, we got to make sure that our actions are consistent with that. So, I just didn't feel like we're being consistent, so...
Point, thank you.
Need to make any kind of a resolution that would go forward to the board?
No, I've got the notes down. We'll certainly add this to the list of items to the comp plan. Further direction from the bubble up.
Throw it out to the next board.
They'd love that, out of nowhere.
Anything else? May I have a push and adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned?